Thank you for giving us to come out and work on city business tonight, give us a conduct and what do you see fit to do the things for the betterment of this town, these things we ask in your name. Amen. [inaudible] Is over here now? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. First floor.
Present.
Chairman Clark is not here. Okay. You have the minutes for June in front of you.
Mike Mitchell, three minutes.
Alimented motion approved, we have a second.
A second.
All in favor?
None.
So approved. Uh, Mayfield Mitchell's in front of you. Balance sheet. Off the count of three, tomorrow, June's not, we don't have June's ready yet.
This is water under the bridge, month here, ain't it?
This is water under the bridge, just let me spin.
I'm making motion, we can bring this along.
We have a second. Motion is second, Hall of Honor. Okay. We've got a guest with us tonight, Jerry Copke.
Copke.
And for those of you who haven't been here, uh, the city under Act six oh five is required to have a audit of a water and sewer system or a rate study of the water and sewer system. We were accepted both on two loan applications, uh, both of the water project and sewer project that the city has to get done. We have letters from ADQ and letters from health department to do both those projects. And we got very fortunate in this funding cycle, we did not think we'd get any one funded, and they both got funded. So, uh, we've got a lot to go over tonight, and that's Jerry has agreed to do the six oh five rate study, and then he did the, he's gonna go over tonight, if we don't approve the sales tax, what's your order rate's gonna be? If you approve the sales tax, now what's your water rate's gonna be? And that's all of the price he was gonna charge us for doing the basic rate study. Then he'll also do a cost of production of water at the water plant, uh, in that study. So everything, everything will be complete. This is a required thing that every city's gonna have to do. Uh, you gotta do it if you're gonna do a major project. Lenwood could have put this off two more, year and a half more, if we weren't gonna do anything. But because we're doing, looking at doing a project, it has to be done now, and I thought it would be nice if we could get Jerry to present, so everybody would know if we redo, reallocate the sales tax money, what our water rates are gonna be, and we don't, what our water and sewer rates are gonna be. Uh, so he was nice enough to do that in this study, and he said he would do this work for us in the same price he would do just the six oh five rate study that we have to do. And these, if this is all, you'll, you've got these ready to send to natural resource for their approval. So if we approve all this tonight, we're going through the meeting, he's got it ready to send in a natural resource, uh, and what other agency, who else is gonna get it?
Uh, Legislative Board.
Legislative Board. So they will have to approve all this before all these projects can come together, so, uh, if there's a deadline of June twenty-four, uh, June, last year, June next year, to have these projects under construction to get the money at these interest rates. So we just thought we'd move it at fast pace, and now they've really pushed it. All these people that got offered this money are gonna have to, these two hundred and roughly twenty projects in the whole state that they funded, everybody's gonna have to be under construction, two hundred and twenty or two hundred and thirty, whatever, I'm not looking at the exact number of jobs, roughly two hundred something statewide got funded. And all those are gonna have the same deadline to get under construction by, so this gentleman's gonna, just another, what, six companies that do rate studies, that approve rate study? How many is there?
There's several peaches.
There's getting to be a few more people, have to have a rate study completed by then, plus the cities under five hundred and the cities under a thousand have to be complete in all this timeframe too, so these guys are gonna be busy. This is not an option, the only option we had to hire. Lenwood had to hire somebody to do it. This is a gentleman we hired and was able to get, get to us, because I thought we needed a rate study done to look at what our water bill's gonna be if we approve them, the reallocation of sales tax, or we don't approve the allocation of sales tax. And we're very fortunate that Jerry, he worked a whole weekend extra on it to get it out for us, and I really appreciate it, Jerry. I'm gonna turn it over to you, uh, and just kinda explain the rate study, and then if everybody's got, if anybody's got a question on it, I wanna explain, I want, we wanna try to answer all the questions on it, uh, and then we'll go on down into the, we've got several things to go through tonight in the meeting, but we need to understand, when he was here last week working with us, he didn't have all the numbers put together tonight? My understanding you've got all the numbers put together with a, with a, this will be the proposal we're gonna send to natural resource and, uh, to the Legislative Board Committee, uh, as we move forward, because this is gonna be, and this is cover us on the loan applications we're doing, and Act six oh five, uh, study that we have to have, this is gonna do all of that in one, one deal. So I'm gonna turn the floor to you, Jerry.
Mayor Pilot, uh, referenced Act six oh five. Uh, back in two thousand twenty-one, uh, the state passed legislation establishing requirements of water providers, uh, to, uh, ensure or track the progress and provide for financial sustainability. The state had experienced too many systems, most of them are small, uh, who were underwater, had no money in the bank, were having trouble paying their debt service, and thus water and sewer service to their customers were suffering, and the state were getting calls asking for help. Legislature established a task force that came up with Act six oh five and was adopted in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, two of the major components of Act six oh five was requiring that, uh, city councils and board of directors of water and sewer systems receive education and training specifically related to the water and sewer system. And your council received training online, uh, by the end of last year. Uh, the second requirement was that the Arkansas Department, or the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission was tasked with monitoring financial sustainability and requiring public water and sewer systems to have an annual rates, or not an annual, but a rate study completed at least every five years. Um, there are a lot of criteria to be compliant with Act six oh five, and I follow them in this report. We need to look at your operating revenues, your expenses, your debt service, uh, reserves, uh, and, and your audits. Uh, I looked at your two thousand twenty-one audit, or two thousand twenty-one audit, your two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two, uh, income statements and your, uh, rate and billing information. Um, I put that together into this product. The rates are required to be sufficient to meet your debt service, uh, pay for anticipated operating expense, and cover any necessary reserves. For public utilities, the reserves typically include reserves related to debt service and for capital reserves. Act six oh five requires systems to fund and place at least five percent of their total revenues into a capital reserve. The city has been putting five percent of their revenues into a depreciation reserve, which is essentially the same thing. Uh, it's, it was a requirement of natural resources loans and bonds, and it will continue forward. In order to measure that rate sufficiency, um, the rate study needed to address a number of measures for financial sustainability. Uh, first one is, is current ratio, comparing your current assets with your current liabilities. Um, you exceed that ratio, the target is between one point five and two point one, and yours is at, uh, fifteen point seven, which means that you're able to cash flow your system effectively and not have to worry about, uh, meaning day-to-day, um, bills. The second thing is the debt coverage ratio, and that is, uh, amount of money you have left after you pay your operating expense to meet your debt service. And it's, you're required to have a debt, uh, coverage ratio of, between one point one and one point two five, um, which means that debt, when you subtract your operating expense from your revenues, you have to have at least the amount of debt service plus one tenth additional debt service, and you exceed that for both water and sewer. Uh, third major one is operating ratio, the comparison of money coming in and money going out. A one point oh oh operating ratio means that the same dollar, uh, coming in, and you spend every dollar of that going out. Uh, the rec, the target ratio is a one point oh five, providing you a five percent cushion, um, because things tend to come up over the year, and, uh, that allows you the flexibility of, uh, responding to those surprises. Um, and finally, the affordability rate. Um, fin, public financing agencies such as natural resources, the USD, World Development, uh, determine that rates are considered to be affordable if they are between one and a half and two percent of the median household income. Uh, and yours are within that, uh, measure, uh, and, and will be, uh, going forward. Now for the rate recommendations. You have been fortunate to get, you, you've got a water improvement project, which is almost four point six million dollars, four million five hundred and seventy-five thousand. You've got a seventy-five percent grant and a twenty-five percent loan. That grant represents a savings of ten dollars per customer per month, that you don't have to recover through rates. Sewer improvements, um, that's a four point four million dollar project, and although you did not get any grant funds, you did receive a low interest loan of one point seven five percent over twenty years. The rate recommendations included in the report, uh, needed to provide two different options. One is what the rates would need to be if the city continues operating under the current, uh, lending bonds. Uh, and for water, it would require a four percent, four point three percent increase for each of the next five years. For sewer, it would require a seven point five percent increase for each of the next five years. However, the city has had a policy of increasing, or a history of increasing rates by five percent per year. This would be in lieu of. Now, if the proposed sales tax, uh, election is successful, um, and the city has additional flexibility to pay debt service, then there will be no need to increase water rates for the next five years, and sewer rates would need to increase only two percent per year for the next five years. And with those proposed rates, the affordability rate is still within the funding guidelines. I need to go, you, you, mayor, I'm in.
With a huge amount, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
With the huge amount of loan forgiveness that we're hoping to get, and we're gonna get, uh, I noticed we, that, uh, going from thirty to a twenty, we're gonna save a pretty good chunk on our interest.
Yes.
And I, and this might be a stupid question, but I noticed that a ten-year repayment was, was a flat one percent, is that something that's even within reach for the city on a ten-year payout? Or would it overtax it, overstrap us too tight? Because we're gonna be getting so much of this forgiven till we're talking like, what, four point three eight minus two point, I mean, we're talking about, you know, I, I was just wondering, I was throwing it out there.
If you're, if you're successful, if the sales tax election is successful.
On reallocate the money?
That is the distinct possibility.
Okay. Uh, that would be, that would be a lot, because, uh, just on the, it wouldn't be as much as the first lick, but on that, but it would still be, still be a lot per year.
Right.
You know, so, just a thought.
That is, that's a possibility, and as far as, um, final loan agreements, you have time to.
We could do it in twenty years, yeah, right, I got you. Okay.
Does anybody have other questions? Hopefully we can get the sales tax reallocated, so we can use this money. And this is, and what he's talking about here is only addressing the one percent. The half percent that would all be in this vote would give us some money to be more flexible with the police department, the fire department, the city park, and the dog kennels, and without hurting the three-year ago money that was coming into the hatchet sales tax for streets. As long as I'm mayor, that will never change. You've still gotta fund streets, but we can fund the streets at the same level that were being funded, and this will allow us to keep three police officers on staff, we can start funding the fire department again, uh, we could, it was about, running away around twenty thousand dollars a year to city parks, which we put no money in city parks, we put no money in the fire department. The budget will support two police officers only, uh, we're putting, the, the only thing that goes to the dog kennel is the money that's on the water bill, that's four fifty a month?
Dollar.
A dollar a month?
Dollar.
We get a dollar a month for the people living in city limits for water, I mean, on water bill, that goes, and that's all we're getting to fund, because everybody calls, well, the dogs picked up.
I heard all the sound.
We get a dollar a month on the water bill, and that's all, that's all the money that that, we operate on, that's it. We are now zero funding the fire department at all, except for the rural, the people that have a rural water bill are paying five dollars a month in Act six oh five, six oh eight thirty-three, money that the city can't take away from the fire department, and get that government money back, and that's all we're funding the fire department. The fire department will not stay functional with that little amount of money, and it's been funded that way now, this is your bound, and you will not keep the fire department up. I mean, we don't need any fire truck today, not saying that, but a fire truck right the other day, you got three million dollars, you got three fire trucks out there, they're a million dollars a copy. And we have zero money going back in reserve to buy a truck. Now, we don't need a fire truck today, and that's, that's the attitude we've got up here, we don't need it today, just wanted to put money back for it. You got three trucks, you got, none of them, all of them are twelve years old, there's nothing new truck we got?
Yes.
So we don't have any reserve for any of the trucks, no trucks. There's three million dollar worth of trucks sitting out there today, passing, but no reserve going back. We've got to start funding, putting some money back, or you go look up one day, and we need a fire truck, and we don't have anybody to buy one. You don't need a, we don't need to buy a fire truck today, I'm not saying that, but we've gotta start putting some money back to buy a fire truck, because a million dollars a copy, where you gonna get the money? Because there's three of them that's gonna be thirty, in twenty years gonna be, you're gonna need three million dollars, because there're gonna be thirty-year-old trucks, but you can't keep running them.
And you're gonna have an ISO?
Yeah, ISO reports come in, the, the only good thing about ISO is, of course, we're gonna get plastic on ISO, because fire hydrants gotta be here five hundred foot in town, they're, they're a thousand foot right now. So I don't know where you're gonna put that in the hydrants, it will probably never hold a class four, because fire department, the water department can't put double fire hydrants in town, we don't have the money for that. But the fire trucks will rate, they used to age out, as long as a truck passes its pumper test now, they can stay in service, that's a big change. Our trucks, if we keep them up, we should be able to get a little more life out of the cell, thirty-year-old trucks, thirty-year-old trucks. Yeah, but anyway.
All our dogs run loose and like a lot better, they had more hydrants.
Yep. But anyway, you know, this, this does to act, we're, we're talking mainly about the water and sewer issue, I was, the thing I was proud of, to get this study done before the voters gonna vote, we have a way, we have a way not to go up on water rates. If we don't do this, we're gonna go, we're gonna go up on water rates, since this is not an option. We don't have an option not to accept the money to do these two projects with, because we're written up on them. ADQ, don't know what's been going down the river, we got our letter. Uh, we better get the project, we gotta get the infiltration stopped. And you know what, they gave you a funding slot to do it. We're written up at the water plant, for not enough capacity, and you know what? Both of those projects, all these projects are on a point-based system, to even get funding at zero forgiveness money is a big deal, to get the one seven five. To get a seventy-five percent grant in water, we stacked up, nobody got a seventy-five percent forgiveness loan in the state, nobody. Uh, well, one Conway or something got some different money that was, they were all the ones that got it, that was forgiveness, they got more, but.
The city did very, very well.
But Lenwood getting a seventy-five percent forgiveness loan on the water project is unheard of. And these are not projects Billy Flower came up with when I got mayor, I wanted to do, these are projects that letters are laid into mayor's hands when I got here, and they gotta be done. And we now have a funding, we didn't think we were gonna get a funding source to do those, and we did, so, and, and we can also do it if we reallocate the tax with no increases. We gotta get the people to understand, and we can cut the five percent out, I'm not so sure we might not wanna keep two percent, since you gotta have two percent on water, keep a two cent, two percent cost of living, that's for the council to decide, and this gentleman's recommending that we could do without, period, uh, and look at it again in five years, but we're gonna have to put two percent even on sewer field to stay in compliance. But even those numbers are tremendous, but that's because we get to use all the sales tax banks coming in. If we don't vote for this sales tax, we're still gonna collect it, and it's gonna set in the bank account, we can't use it. We're crazy not to use the money that we're already collecting, and we can't do it without restructuring the notes, this isn't, this don't give us any more money to play with, that's just giving us money, and somebody called me the other day, said, well, bond issues says you can issue up to four point two five million dollars in water improvements. And that's what we were gonna do, if this loan come in, we will only fund the nine hundred and thousand dollars, whatever the difference is, we'll restructure the bond issues, it has to be paid off to clear up the sales tax to use them, and those are gonna be at roughly five percent interest. And we had to do that to free up the money to do other projects. But we won't borrow the four point two five million dollars, we'll borrow the nine hundred, whatever that number comes up as, nine.
Nine thirty-eight.
Nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Really, I'd like to make a note. Um, one side of you might would say, let's keep saving, we're making money on our CDs, let's keep saving. Problem is, we live in an age right now that the rate of inflation is by far exceeding the rate of savings, and we're not gonna save ourselves to a position where we can just write a check for this at any point, you know, there's.
But the problem is, is we, we don't have time to save money, go back.
Exactly. We don't have the time, but if we did have the time, it would still be in our best interest to take the low interest loan, get the job done, as opposed to trying to keep saving, is that correct? Uh, what was that, what was that one, uh, project that we bid on here a year ago, or it got bid on two years ago, and it was gonna, it was down there on the, I think it was on a pump station, uh, posted in the Suburban Cemetery down there, and it was, at the first, we had a bid for like sixty, seventy thousand by the time we kicked the can a couple of times, it was up around a hundred fifty.
You look at the sidewalk projects and look what they come in at, what money projected at. Uh, so we just gotta get out and get people to understand what's going on, because this is, we have the money if you let us get it reallocated. And it's not, it, the, the tax proposals are gonna say it's a new tax, but you cancel the old tax, and you get the new tax, it's gonna go for different debt services, just like refinancing the house. Uh, the way this will fund though, and the way the lawyers have wrote the law up, we'll borrow the five million, four point five million to refinance, we'll borrow the nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, there'll be two different bond issues, one will be through Stevens will issue it, the other one the lawyer will do through natural resource at the one point seven five percent interest, which does include, we checked on this, natural resource puts a one percent service fee on their bid, but the, the interest rate is really a point seven five plus a one percent service fee. So this is not gonna be a one point seven five plus a one percent service fee, it's a point seven five and a one percent service fee, so that's all we're gonna pay. Then on the sewer part of the project, we have to. Then on the sewer part of the project, we have to dedicate something to pay that. The way the ordinance is restructured, the sales tax revenue will go into the general water and sewer account and pay all the water and sewer bills. The rate structure, water and sewer will be dedicated to pay the sewer project. Now, and some of this five million dollars is sewer project money too. That's refinanced. So the sewer is getting paid for out of the redo on the sales tax. And we will pay all the water and sewer bills with the balance of the sales tax. And pay the note payment on the sewer project out of water and sewer revenue. And we don't have to go back to the voter. That's the way it's written in the ordinance. So you can do that without having to keep bringing it back up to vote to at some point in time, if we get paid off and we need to do another water project, if I understand Sarah right, and we have enough revenue, we don't have anything in the, I don't want anything we're gonna need to do, but you could, without going back to the voter, you could do another sales tax on, another note on the water projects, but we don't have any. But the money is already allocated, that if you've got enough revenue base, this gentleman said we've got enough revenue base to do another job, we could do another bond issue after we paid off the nine hundred thousand dollars. Finally stood her right at that point back. So this makes it where you don't have to go back to the voter and do these revotes all the time. There's a way, and this, this is the way the lawyer said it should have been written the first time, so it wasn't so restrictive on the city, and it's, it's, uh, but you're still not just gonna go out there and get money to do a project that you don't wanna do. The project's gonna have to be approved by the voter or said that we're gonna do those projects, and that's where we're gonna go. So is there any other questions on how the rates will pay for the, how it's gonna be paid back? Am I good? Yes, Bill?
That all sounds great. I was just curious, how's our water leak thing doing?
We got, Rural Water was here today. The city has bought the equipment to our own leak detection. Rural Water come down and showed us how to run our new equipment today. Four leaks today. We found they're gonna get fixed, so we're gonna quit looking for leaks till we fix them for them. And then we'll go back, but today, in about what, four and a half hours? We're able to find four leaks. None of this is coming to the top of the ground. So we now have the equipment. The city's been, been trained on how to use it, and if we need Rural Water to come back, Rural Water's willing to come back and, and train. We bought the equipment Rural Water sent by. It's equipment Rural Water uses. So it was real easy for them to train us on it. And our guys have already worked, y'all worked with them two different times before, before this. So our guys, this ain't the first time they've looked at the equipment. They've looked at it this third time. But we worked with our equipment today, so cities, cities were working diligently, started on that. Any other questions?
I have a question. I'm looking at the, um, official ballot that, um, I guess equivalent of the clerk put out. And I have a question about item number two is the ordinance that we would vote for or against. And it basically authorizes that one percent sales tax to be used to, uh, pay bonds back. And that, that, that item number two is not the, is, is not the refinancing. Well, it's the refinancing plus the, the money that you would get in addition to the repurchasing. So, so I know where that one percent is. We all know what that's coming from. Item number five, water improvement bonds is for the four point five million. Why doesn't that fifth item include sewer? It, it looks like it's just dedicated to water. I mean, we're collecting the one percent and it can go to water or sewer, but the bond is only for water improvement.
That's correct because the time we did those, I was had to say what project you're willing to fund. But if you read on down in there, the rest of the money, somewhere else in that ordinance, it states that the balance of the money will go to the general operating accounts of water and sewer to pay those bills. And so that's what Sarah has said. We talked to Sarah, and you've looked at it also. The, where the ordinance is written, the balance of the money, you'll borrow the, what, four point five million and the nine hundred and thirty eight thousand. But that's two bond issues because one will be a current money bond on the market, roughly, they take five percent. The other will be a one, one seven five. Then the balance of that money will go into the general water and sewer account. And you will pay all the bills. That's the way the rest of the ordinance, if you get on down there, I'm, I'm not looking at the ordinance, somewhere on down that ordinance says the balance of that can be used for O and M of the water and sewer department. And you'll use that to pay your bills in, uh, water and sewer, labor, electric, chemical, everything will be paid with the balance of the sales tax. Then we'll, we'll have to commit the rates. The water rate for water and sewer will pay the note payment on the sewer bond. Jerry, that's the way you read that too, right?
Right. The, the current ordinance
Will not allow that.
restricts the sales tax collections to go to repayment of the two thousand and six and two thousand and four bonds.
That's not like you may use that.
And, and the, the the proposed ordinance has for the two thousand and four, two thousand and six, and the water improvement bonds. And then any monies left over can be applied to other water and sewer purposes, which includes that large note that you're going to be taking from with natural resources for sewer improvements.
If I understood Sarah correctly, the way that's gonna be written, that money won't be allowed to be used on that four and a half million dollar sewer rate. You'll have to pay the bills of the water and sewer department. And then the water and sewer revenue
Can be used
We have to dedicate something to natural resource to make sure that gets paid back. So they're gonna take the water and sewer revenue, because you're gonna pay the water and sewer bills with the balance of the sales tax. The water and sewer revenue will go to pay the note payment on that four million dollars. Sarah said that's, the way it's written up in the ordinance, that's the way we'll go to natural resource, and it, that's the way it's gonna work. And you don't have to redo the bond issues because you're not borrowing that four point two five million. You're only gonna borrow the nine hundred and thirty eight thousand other than the, and that's gonna leave the rest of that money that can go into the general, not general fund, but the general account of water and sewer. And that will pay all the operating expense of the water and sewer department. Then the water and sewer rate will have to be, we gotta dedicate something to make the payment to natural resource. The water and sewer revenue will make the note payment on the sewer project, both water and sewer. And there's plenty of money there. He's looked at it, Sarah's looked at it, and there's plenty of money there to do it this way. And that's, so that's the way it will be restructured. We did not know we were gonna get a two point eight million dollar forgiveness grant. So we won't borrow the four point two five million that, or whatever that, what did four point two five million in there was gonna borrow for the water project on top of four point five. I'm not looking at the ordinance describing, but that's the way it was written, and so that's the way it's gonna work.
Billy, I did notice here, which y'all wrote it up time again, but August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, your financial assistance will be considered declined. If you look back, if you failed to accept the proposed funding prior, August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, your financial assistance will be considered declined, and you will have to reapply. We cannot afford to miss that under no circumstances.
Absolutely not. That can happen. The world would end if you did that. The world would end.
It's ended anyway.
Absolutely. Hundred and forty-five percent increase, yeah. World would end.
We're not gonna help. Sharon, if you've been here.
Ah, Billy, give me a break. I was here today and I did a regular information request that you did not allow. So Billy, uh,
Sharon, your free information request. Let me go over it. I have it right here. I got it. The girl brought it to me. Now, if you want me to go over that. Jerry Cope is not a grant writer. He does rate studies.
We know, we know.
He does rate studies.
I know who he is. We've done things before. He's great.
He's, he is our
He was the one who said, don't put it on sewer, just put it on, I know. Good to see you again.
We're not doing anything on this water. We're shutting the vote.
Whatever you say, Billy.
Jerry, would you explain to her what I'm gonna do this time?
I think you did a fine job.
Alan, I think you need to type pictures. That's correct.
Anyway, the grant writer, let's go through the first step right quick. The grant writer on this project is Arkansas Department of Agriculture, or, and Natural Resources. There's not a grant writer. The money's coming through those two agencies. They'll write the programs. There's not a grant writer in it. The engineer that was here the other night, he gets paid for project at a set amount that the city has no negotiation of. If you don't do a project, you don't get paid. And he only gets paid what the government says is the fees and the services he builds for, and that's what he builds. So those are all, and if you want what projects he's got paid on right now, we have Park Street Sidewalk Project, Tennessee Sidewalk Project, uh, Bridge and Coords with ADEM Project, and the First Street Project is getting ready to start. And Mountain View Project is under, if the Highway Department approves Mountain View Project, the Mountain View Project here will get paid for it. But that's what he gets paid for. So that's all your questions, Andrew. We'll try to give them to you. The city does not get emails on the public phone, or, uh, texts on the public phone. You sent, you told us today, you texted to the phone. We don't, nobody can get texted on a public phone. So I'm sorry you didn't get this. I'll give you that in more detail, but that's everything you asked for. Jerry was nice enough in the work he's done for the city. In Act six oh five study you're doing, you did the work tonight at the same thing you were gonna do it for, whether he did this Act six oh five or not.
One thing I forgot to mention is that the letter that the city got from Natural Resources regarding the commitment of the sewer loan, the four point four million sewer loan at one point seven five percent for twenty years also indicated that he anticipated that it would require a one hundred and fifty-eight percent rate increase. My rate study with the additional information provided by the mayor and Brenda suggested that the four point three, seven point five, or even better with if the, uh, sales tax election is approved, is a much more reasonable and appropriate increase.
So if we get the rate, if you, we are gonna hold this, but the sales tax can be held for the reauthorization sales tax, you don't have to have a rate increase other than two percent on sewer for the next five years. So, um, but anyway, you know, we went over that. Any great details for the rest of it? But anyway. We're good, I think. Does anybody have any more questions first? Jerry? Sarah?
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with the city of Atlanta.
Okay. We have an offer in front of us. For a twenty year note for, uh, under the Safe Water, uh, State Revolving Loan Fund for four million, three hundred eighty-three dollars, five hundred fifteen, five hundred fifteen dollars at one point seven five percent with construction or withdrawal money having to be done by July one of twenty twenty-four. We have to have this back to them before August eighteenth. There, this offer is pulled up. There's roughly six hundred towns looking for this money. And there's some other towns that we don't want to be happy to get it, and I don't know where we're gonna find it. Y'all were explaining the way we would do this if the people approve the sales tax reallocation, or if they don't, reapprove the sales tax allocation. I know the sky's not falling down, but we are written up on both these projects.
I'm against you to approve that. We can't afford to not approve that.
I have a second. Rick?
Billy, I don't think anybody can blame you personally for anything that's gone on with that. I realize we've got a two hundred thousand dollar building that's sitting empty over here. They're looking, people are looking at that and saying, why should we just let you have money to do whatever you want to with it?
Rick, there's money, there's money.
And wait a minute, wait a minute. We got people driving city trucks all over the place. One person to a truck. That, that really don't make sense to me because Glen was not that big. At least, can you consolidate something? You know, gas is high. And, and it's just, and none of this has anything, this was started a long time before you got re-mayor. But it needs to be addressed and things quieten down. You've got to tighten your strings. Everybody else is asked to tighten theirs. The city needs to tighten theirs too.
The money you're looking at on these two projects is for a very, these, these applications were, are for a specific project only. The money you're borrowing on this, if the bid comes in under, you won't borrow it but the amount of the money of the project. Bid comes in over, the city's gotta pay the difference. The engineer says he's got these bids tied up that we should probably come in under. It may not be. We can't borrow it. The sewer project is to replace the problem children on sewer mains and manholes only. We can't rehab a pump station. We can't do anything with it because that's not what the grant application asked for. And this government, this is the federal Build Back Better money, and it's got, somehow it's got, biggest majority of this money gotta be paid back. It's not free. And, but the city council, and no matter what in here, can do anything with this money but sewer project that's replacing the infiltration on sewer mains and our repair manholes that are need to be repaired or replaced. There's unfortunately enough money in this project.
They're going into general.
This will not, and it cannot be spent. I can't buy a pump motor for the sewer plant with this money. Period. And if the money comes in underbid, we won't borrow it but whatever that bid amount is when we get there. Hopefully, we have got a little bit too much money in both of these projects because I didn't want the city to have to pay go into their reserve account and get the money out because if this project comes in overbid, then we gotta take it out of reserve account and pay the difference. But if it comes in underbid, you don't borrow the money. You're gonna borrow the money that the bid comes in at only. Both of these projects, the water project is to put a additional filter and, uh, uh, storage that contact, it's called contact time, tank in it, we're written up on a two million dollar, on, to be a two million dollar plant. We can't replace the motor at the water system. There's no way in these two projects the city council can waste a dime because it is a, that, I can't do anything with the water money but put that additional, uh, filtration and clear well in. That's it.
I know all that. It's, it's the, it's the waste that's went on before that, and that half cent, you're wanting another half cent to go into general funds?
No, no, no. I'm not wanting another half cent anywhere, Rick.
That's the street money to go into general funds so you can do all this other stuff.
Hey, if we don't go okay, thank you. If we don't reallocate this money, our water rates according to Mr. Cope, or Coke, got him, Coke. Our water rates and sewer rates are both going up, and I hate to see that happen to our seniors. And, uh, just thankful to say.
Yes, I will have a motion to approve the sewer, and Terry, second to him also. All in favor?
Just making note, Billy. I, I do agree to Rick at some point, to some point, of what he's saying. There are a lot of places that we can tighten up around here, like going back and finishing jobs, picking up after ourselves, stuff like that. And it looks bad. And here we are asking for more money when we can't And it looks bad, and here we are asking for more money, when we can't tighten up in areas like that, I do agree with that. But I am for this as well, so, just like.
I'm not arguing we can't tighten up, I'm working, working as fast as I can do to get some stuff moving forward, but.
You just can't fix things overnight, but, you know, when you come in and there's a whole bunch of things that are wrong, you've gotta start somewhere. And start fixing little by little, but everybody wants everything that it wants, and there's a whole bunch of people going, but look at this, and look at this, and look at this, and look at this. Okay, he knows, he gets it, and he's started it here, and he's moving down the line. You know, we, we gotta stop arguing about those little things, because it's gonna distract from getting this passed, and what's gonna happen is the, the seniors that are on fixed income, when their water rate goes up another seven and a half percent, they won't be able to eat. They won't be able to afford to pay their water bill, their water's gonna get shut off, and then, then they're gonna really be in trouble. With no water, and, and then what happens, they have to try to afford to turn it back on, because there's a turn-on fee, right? So, all of those things are, are gonna cause them to suffer, and that's the problem. We can't afford to have misinformation and kind of vickering over little things confuse people to where it's gonna cost people a lot, it really will. There's people that can't afford an additional thirty-five dollars on their water bill, that means they're eating or not eating for a week.
The, the senior citizens actually, at the center today, asked Rick if he would address this with the council. And their voters.
It's a matter of trust, you don't see any of them here.
We need to win back the trust of these people, and that, and they asked Rick to ask these questions, so that's what he did.
So, the misinformation though, that hits back to them, is what a lot of the problem is, you know, there's a lot of confusion going on.
I did not start either one of these projects. Both of these projects were laid in my lap when I took over the mayor. I didn't start, I didn't go out there and say, hey, let's go do a project. Both of these were told, we're gonna get done, or we're gonna be in physical distress, and they'll take the system, get somebody to run the system inside the city, that will take care of it. I didn't, now that, would that happen in the next year or so, I don't know how quick Health Department and Natural Resources, uh, A D Q's gonna come, but both of them, both these letters to get these two projects done, I was handed when I took the office, I didn't go looking for them. I did go look to get a way to get them fixed, that's what you, that's what I'm a mayor for, is to go try and get your problem children fixed. We got very fortunate that we got a funding slot on both. There's six hundred cities applied for money, two hundred got money, we got money on both a water and a sewer project. It's a point-based system, so, all the federal agencies that looked at these funding projects, that's the reason they're so specific at what can be done with the money. You can't change the scope of work, one iota, or you gotta go back and start over. If you, because it's a point-based system, you got the one point seven five percent interest loan on a point-based system that rated higher than four hundred other cities. You got the seventy-five percent grant on the water project, because you got a lot of problems in water that they want to see fixed, and you got a seventy-five percent, it's called loan forgiveness, it's not a grant, but you got two point eight million dollars in loan forgiveness there to do a, a specific project that was a point-based system. I'm, I'm doing what we got, I should've been doing it as a mayor, with what I was handed to me on, when I took the job. Is your wasteful spending of money, we're gonna, we're working on that, I asked Brenda about my own team every day about getting stuff straightened up and done. Are we there yet? No? Are we doing better than we were in December? Yes, and probably people's gonna stay driving individual rigs, because most of the time, there's one guy doing that, and one guy doing that, they may two end up at a project, if a problem comes up, but they're not riding around and be riding around for four guys coming one project there. They're going to do projects, and sometimes you get more than one rig there if you run into a problem. I, I understand that, but they are.
Billy, I'd like to say I agree with Chris, which is, with the, of Rick's view, and I agree with her, I, I can't stress how much I agree with her. Because I explained last time, and I'll recap it real fast, but ten percent of an eight hundred dollar income is eighty bucks. Ten percent of an eight thousand dollar income is eight hundred bucks. Well, that's eighty dollars would be one percent, so to a senior that's drawing eight hundred dollars a month, it's a ten percent water increase, to a person that's got him and his wife are both working, it is a one percent increase. And so, the people, if we don't get this reallocation taken care of, and we fail to act on this loan forgiveness program, what's gonna happen in effect is, the people are gonna get an eight, nine percent increase that needed the least. And the people that can't afford it, eighty dollars, as I stand today, now, maybe tomorrow might be different, but as I stand today, eighty dollars is not gonna wear a name or a title. But there is people, even at the grocery store right now, that's sitting there looking at one cut of meat, wishing they could have that one, and, um, we've gotta get this reallocation thing taken care of.
The good thing is, is that it keeps being said that we're asking for more money, which is not true. We're not asking for more money, this is the same one and a half percent everyone already pays, it's not more, it's the exact same money. One and a half percent, everybody's been paying already, for how many years now?
Third quarter.
A half?
Twenty.
Okay, twenty, good lord, nobody even knows.
Two thousand four, not six.
So, everybody's been paying this, we're not asking for more, it's just moving in the different locations. And I know that you have a history of people with general fund issues, um, I don't think you can hold this council accountable for mistakes of other people, you know, that, it really, it's frustrating that there is so many people that, well, you know, you know, it's just like getting people here. Everybody that we've talked to in our cafe, literally, nope, I don't wanna go, you don't know what happened so-and-so years ago with this and such-and-such, or something I'd never heard of before. Well, but what about today, there's a whole different group of people here, why won't you come today? Because you don't know what happened, this is such-and-such years ago, and what they did, folks, gotta get over it. That was then, this is now, let's move forward, okay? The money needs to go in the right places, so we can use it to better this community, do better things, have better things. We can do better together if everybody would get over the past. Things have been mishandled, granted, that does not mean that's what we're gonna do today. I know I'm asking you to blindly trust us, but we're sitting here for a reason, please do.
I signed, I signed a check the other day, before, when I was in there signing checks, for a thousand and ninety-nine dollars, if I'm not mistaken. And the first thing that comes through my mind is, where did that money come from? Because I don't remember allocation or any in the budget, I know where it came from, it came out of the general fund, which makes it harder to do anything else with, but, at the end of the day, the dog's gotta be fed. We pick them up on the street, take them up there, they gotta be fed, so, I mean, there's some things you can kick and, there's other things you can't. You don't just tell the dog, we'll see you next week, we'll get our fund next slide, we'll take care of it, you move on, anyone want, thank you.
Well, Mayor.
Ms. Brenner?
Look, Carrie's worried she doesn't, she hears them, and her husband does, in the legal community. But when you say blindly trust us, blindly trust us, and you've got Alan talking about the checks he has signed, uh, what about the check on July the tenth to, uh, when the water and sewer operations in Glendale, how much was that check for, Alan?
How much was it for?
I don't know, I'm asking him, how much was it?
Well, you, you know, I.
I do not know.
No, I'm asking you, I don't know that I'll talk to you.
Of course you don't.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter.
Can I get a?
Let's take care, let's take care of dogs and cats, but not citizens.
How, how much was that check for, Sharon?
I'm asking you.
They signed so many checks.
I supposed to sign stacks after stacks of checks.
Blindly trust us.
I didn't ask you blindly trust us.
No, she did, she said it would be, you know, blindly trust us, she's trying hard, her husband's trying hard, they moved here. She hears stuff that was said years ago.
That check was for six hundred eighty-two thousand dollars and forty-four cents, prove me different.
Why?
I know, Mr.
I'd like to tell it, I bet, good lawyer.
So, another issue I feel like we have is the bickering back and forth like this right here, I mean, I don't understand what this is about.
You don't understand what a check to the city, to, to the check?
What I don't understand is there is an order in this room.
I'm not into the danger for this.
Okay, there's an order. And we don't follow that, everybody gets to sit there and mouth off, and be mean, and be rude, and be disrespectful, and everybody gets upset, and everybody talks and stuff like that, it doesn't do any help. It doesn't help us at all, does this help? I don't know about you, but I got plenty of stuff to do tonight.
Maybe you should go do it.
Um, unfortunately, I can't. Okay?
Can we just move on to the next?
It is, what she gets signed for, I don't know.
That's why people don't turn.
Then, then, please don't come. When the meeting's over, I'll go in there and you, Brenda, and I'll look at whatever check you're talking about, I don't know what you're talking, I don't know what check you're talking about. No, I'm telling you. But we'll go in there when the meeting's over, and we'll show you the check, and we'll tell you, explain to you in detail what it was, because you don't know what you're talking about. But anyway. The council.
Y'all weren't, y'all weren't elected to anything, you were appointed.
You're right, because nobody else would do the job.
Not a single person up there was elected.
You're right, you're right.
They had no opposition, nobody cared.
You're right.
Nobody cared.
Nobody does care. As a matter of fact, we got three councils that were elected, there's three of us that are appointed, but it doesn't matter where you're appointed or elected, it's our job to do.
But they gotta serve the people, they can't serve themselves.
What am I serving myself for?
That's, that's what I'm saying, you know, you're telling her not to come.
I'm telling her, she's being rude and disrespectful in here.
You know?
And all she does is argue in here.
Well?
That's what I'm saying.
I argue a little too.
Excuse me?
I said I argue some too.
I understand that.
Free of information requests, you need to come in in a written form to the council, I mean, to the, to the office. If you get that here in a written form, I mean, if you put it on a text message to the mail, I mean, to the phone system, nobody, that's not going anywhere, we don't have a request from you for Freedom of Information Act, because you told us today, you, you'd send a text message to the city's phone number. We do not get text there, you have to email it, you told me your email was broken down, so you texted, so, but.
Mayor, that is not what I said, I called on Friday, I talked to a city employee, she told me how to do it. Brenda Wilson, that's not the way you, and she worked it, I called on Friday, I understand, I have a little bit of understanding about freedom of information, okay? It's, and it's a simple question, it wouldn't even, it wouldn't even have to be freedom of information, just answer the question.
Right here, they're all, I got, I got Ron and Rob, they want you on it today, and I got, and I need you there. But we're, we're through with this, so, we're going to number eight, number eight.
Hey, Billy, I'm like motioning, move to agenda item eight.
Second. On there. Item eight is a letter from the, uh, Department of Arkansas, Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources, for a, uh, financial and loan assistance program for the water project. And if the loan amount would be nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. The principal forgiveness amount's two million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, at a one point seven five percent interest for twenty years. This gets the water project done, that we're written up on by Health Department, can I have a motion?
I make the motion, we can sit.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Billy, I think we need to back up to item number six, I think we understand this, sir.
She's not here, if anybody has any more questions on the ballot, we can go over. I put that in a packet, but everybody, there's nothing changed on that, if anybody's got any questions, we'll answer them.
We did get Rhonda's answer, didn't we? We did answer.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, I have a question.
If you need to talk, I can get Sarah on the phone to make sure you understand it.
Okay, yeah, I, I probably would need that.
I have talked to her about that specific thing, so.
Okay.
It's correct, but, I mean, I know you can't trust me, but, I hope you can trust me, because I've talked to the, I'm the mayor, I have talked to the law firm, the law firm's told me what to tell you, the way it's gonna go, and that's what I did to that. I didn't see any need to have to bring her down here, because she's already explained it in prior meetings about how it would be handled, and that's the way it's gonna go through. We, the only difference is, we got the sewer project we get to do, and we've got a way to get it funded. It's, it's gonna go in the way the sales tax ordinance is written.
So, Billy, the, on Tuesday, at the planning meeting, you, one of the handouts was for the sewer from Arkansas Department of Agriculture that outlined the, uh, approval of financial assistance?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the water one, like this, that was the handout?
Um, that's what, yeah, they're all here, what's the question?
Was there any way we could get a copy of it like we did the sewer, this was, this was the sewer?
You don't have the water one?
No, you hadn't received it yet.
Yeah, I did not have it received, yes, there is.
I would like a copy of that, if.
Would you come make some copies, please?
Thank you.
Yes. She made a copy of that.
Okay, thank you.
It's a little fast, little bit. And we did not have those other night, we knew what the amount was gonna be, and we didn't have them though.
I'm in charge.
All right, next thing on the agenda, number nine. If y'all will, y'all remember, we took a million dollars out of the street fund and put it in a C D, correct? Correct? Brenda, would you, we have the, the, the project we're doing on the water, I mean, on the bridge and the culverts, the city has to pay a hundred percent of the money out, and then the state reimburses us back our seventy-five or eighty percent. The sidewalk project is the same way, we have two of those going. If you look at the sheet there, we have the reason, the account, and the, uh, street fund is, is out of money today, is you put a million dollars in a C D. We have five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents that we're getting back, but we've already had to pay out. And the council didn't wanna keep seven hundred thousand dollars in checking camp, what it didn't need, which we aren't getting any interest on. So, we've, we've moved money out of the street fund, and out of the water sewer, into an interest-bearing account. We wrote those checks, and we don't have full amount of money in the coverage, so what I'm asking y'all to do tonight is let us transfer fifty thousand dollars, with a possibility of up to a hundred thousand, depending on when this money comes back, from general fund to street fund, and as quick as this money comes back, we'll add an improvement in this order to switch the money right back to the general fund. You put the, the money sitting in the bank drawing interest is the reason we don't have to pay.
I'm not that much.
Just about five percent, if you guys remember right.
And that money, as quick as it, this reimbursement comes back, we'll pay city general back. You know, you'll need to do both directions tonight, so we don't have to, we're gonna vote on taking it out, and you vote on putting it back, we're gonna put it right back as quick as this money comes in.
Can you tell us how much that is?
The money we're looking at reimbursement is five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven. The money we're looking at for reimbursement is five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven, sixty-eight.
I got that, so how much should we like, I'm moving it back and forth?
We'll make anybody move it back and forth. We've got...
No, just, no, Bill.
I think we have a motion.
No, we're not moving the CDs.
The CDs are, we take half those, we lose our interest.
Thank you.
It's from, I don't want the street fund, and then street fund back. It's not, it's in our own account.
Billy, we have a motion on the motion.
Now, a motion, I have a second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brenda, would you please go through the three projects? Brenda's gonna run through the three projects, and how much we still like, and how all the money paid out.
Now, in this fund, we're gonna have to check more. The first one is the Park Street highway, and the balance, if it's going, is, if you would say, you have a...
Yeah, it's okay.
It's around one hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars on the new copy and collection, oh nine. And then that's on the Park Street. The balance of what we done on the Tennessee Street Avenue is eighty-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and twenty-one cents. That's the balance of this project. Now, this will be the seventy thousand, twenty-five. This is the twenty-five we want, but we reimburse seventy thousand cents for that. Okay, um, these two projects, engineering fees, that are left on the Park Street is thirty-eight thousand. They haven't made a draw since two thousand twenty-two. This will be their fees for the, your secrets, drop down what we've paid in months. Would I tell her? Most of it is the inspection fees.
But the engineering fees on Park Street and Tennessee, the engineering fee is thirty-eight thousand dollars for the total of the one.
From one, on the new copy and...
And what's the second?
The second one is on the other project, which is Tennessee. That one was unfortunate, definitely. The second one is on our highway, seventy, Tennessee Street. The balance of engineering fees we paid is eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. And these were contracted, whom we did the job to start with, and this is what the state appropriated the four fees would be. And then on the Adam project, which is the twice the newest on the highway, is completed. It is completed, seventy on the old highway, and on the...
All right, great girl.
And how much is that?
It's completed. It's completed.
You're ready, you have a question?
You explain, Mr. E. You start from the top. A couple minutes. All right.
But that was, that was at a minute. Uh, I'll have to get that on this one.
The whole project was three hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And the balance, you're gonna have to get back to me, is ten hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. It has to be ten years before you get our reimbursement back. What's any of it? Thank you, sir. Um, now I don't have that control.
All right. So, do y'all understand what's going on there? We shouldn't get five hundred and eighty-five thousand, plus there's gonna be some more, seventy-five, forty-five, on what's the small balances that are left on all those. And the, the account will straighten up when you get our money reimbursed back.
We've just had to make three payments this month, which might, I'll give us within one period.
Okay. The next thing on the list is the financial audit for the city of Lenwood for December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. So, flip through that real quick, if you have any questions.
Is that in the city hall packet for the night? Do you have any, uh, some more? Is it twenty, twenty-one, all, never gonna look. And just ask, is there, rather, is there a hard copy for Alan, who would like to read, a hard copy?
The light you want, you're reading. Don't worry, you're back in.
Alan, what now?
We, you'd like to read, we, I would too. The council.
Yeah, we, you just, uh...
Had, just not the citizens, okay?
Yeah, but I, I would like to make a, a motion. We can expand this room to accommodate a full mop bucket.
This would, this would, this would've been while Sharon was, uh, reporter trailer and briefing for reporter trailer.
Well, I was, I was seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, ended at twenty, so there's nothing to do with me, but I'm very...
Well, it is December, it's through December.
Well, no, please, all I want is a copy. I understand.
December thirty-first of twenty twenty, this will be here.
I understand what general funds are compared to not having any water and sewer operations. I totally understand.
Okay, what's the option?
Billy, you need a motion?
I need a motion to accept the financial compliance report from the latest...
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
All in favor? There's one letter attached to the back of that. Y'all look at it. I would like to read that. Put that in minutes, please. I need a motion to read, to put the letter to Janet Bradford, uh, Honorable Janet Bradford, Prosecutor, Attorney, and Act of this award. We need to read that in the minutes, please.
Please do.
You need to make a motion to accept this letter.
I make a motion to accept it.
I second that motion. Can we forego the reading? I just, just forego the reading?
Yes.
Why would you forego the reading?
Because I want to.
I second that.
You don't want to know?
All in favor of each of those two motions?
Aye.
Okay. Last thing in your packet tonight. You got your official letter from ADQ over all this up at the river, dated July the tenth. You also have your official letter dated July the eighteenth of our response to that, and that should close that case out. What they're deeming as things there, uh, that's not true. We're not accepting responsibility for things that they're saying, and it's not true. And the, the sewer fund is still in service, so they wrote us up on about five things on it. That's all been fixed. The sewer fund's, they're just gonna let us use it, and don't you up more on it than anything else. But, uh, we have addressed all the issues that were in the letter, and our response letter is back to them on time. And there's really nothing to bother on. Y'all have that. If y'all wanna read it, it's all there.
I'll make a motion with the jury.
Have a second?
A second.
On there?
Aye.